All right. I'm gonna call this meeting to order and I'm gonna ask, uh, Ms. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor McLennan?
Yeah.
City Attorney State?
Here.
Counselor Kat?
Here.
Counselor Crum?
Yeah.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
Counselor Holt?
Here.
Counselor Hutchinson? Counselor Hutchinson?
Here, here, I'm sorry, here.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Counselor Mohammed?
Present.
Counselor Monday? Counselor Murray?
Here.
Counselor Pulliam?
Here.
Counselor Weles?
Here.
Thank you.
Yes, Mayor.
We have none of the ten council people present. We're gonna move forward. I'll have the 2020 West Memphis Drainage Rehabilitation Bead Openings. Do you all, can I get a motion and second to accept or be an openness and move forward?
So move.
Second.
All in favor by?
Uh.
Oppose? We have... Um, were there any corrections or amendments?
Set the minutes, uh, written as written.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor by?
Uh.
Okay.
Close? Uh, on the second, city attorney?
Yes, sir, it's the second reading of an ordinance granting a special use permit for 1598 East Broadway permitting an automotive dealer used slash auto repair garage in a C2 open display district.
It's read for a second time. It will be back on the agenda in two weeks for its final reading.
Mayor, uh, we have the landowner and the tenants here. I don't know if they want you to read it again, and I don't know what the circumstances are with regard to anything that had to be, uh, uh, remedied, but, uh, I don't know if you want to check on that or not.
Okay, we do have, Paul, you have been looking into the, the situation?
Yes, Mayor, uh, I have not noticed any other cars, uh, at the lot, which is what we were talking about at the last meeting, that they, there were some cars that were prematurely, uh, stored on the lot. Uh, I have not noticed that, uh, since then.
All right. Can I get a motion to pause the suspended rules and places on the third reading?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor by?
Uh.
Oppose? City Attorney?
I'd like to ask Paul a question. Excuse me, Mayor McLennan. I'd like to ask Paul a question before we make our final vote on that. I remember the last discussion we had, there were some discrepancies as to whether or not the tenants were working. Are you saying, Mr. Luger, that all of that situation has been cleared up now and we can move forward as we so desire?
To my knowledge, Councilman, Councilperson Mohammed, yes, there's, there's no, there's no transgressions down there occurring on the property now. There, there's no work or, or cars being stored there at present.
Beautiful. If there are no transgressions, then I'm all in favor for voting aye.
Okay, um, can I get a motion to place it on the third, I mean, can I get all in favor by, uh, the place on the third and final reading?
Uh.
Aye.
Oppose? It passes. City Attorney, will you read it for a third and final time?
Third reading of an ordinance granting a special use permit for 1598 East Broadway permitting an automotive dealer used slash auto repair garage in a C2 open display district.
Can I get the motion and second to approve?
Mr. Mayor?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, end discussion.
Yes, I wanted to ask, uh, Paul, do, do they have their license and their occupation, uh, certificate of occupation?
CO?
CO.
Paul?
They, they do not. They would have to have approval of the special use permit before they could apply for the certificate of occupancy.
And it's my understanding, that's what they're coming for, is for us to give them that permission so they can get that certificate of occupancy. Is that correct?
Yes, Mayor.
That's what we're moving to vote on or not. Right, okay, I, I understand, most certainly.
Were there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It passes. Ms. City Clerk, will you get that ordinance or number, please?
That will be ordinance number 2562.
2562. All right, new business? Councilman Pulliam?
Second motion, R1.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor by?
Aye.
Oppose? Then we read my title only. Mr. City Attorney, will you read R1?
All right, R1 is a resolution of intent to support ASU Mid-South efforts to locate an Arkansas Small Business and Technology Development Center Regional Office at ASU Mid-South for economic development purposes.
Can I get a motion and second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
End of discussion. Uh, Dr. West spoke on it earlier, and Philip, was there any other discussion?
Well, I would like to ask one question. I know I, I, I've heard, I've talked to Dr. West, and I've also talked to, uh, Mallory Darby of our Economic Development Office, and I'm, I'm all good with this. I was just wondering, uh, the way the process is now, I think they have to get their application from Little Rock, they fill it out, they send it to our county seat, they fill it out, they set it up to Jonesboro, but there's a number of small businesses that are operated out of homes here, and, and, and in particular, there were 40 between the mid-August, and I'm wondering, uh, how we could resolve, making sure that these people have also got a privileged license through the city because they're working out of their homes, and...
Now, Counselor Crum, when you say working out of their homes, is this in lieu of the COVID-19, or are they just doing work out of the home?
Well, they have businesses running out of the homes, and, uh, you know, they're, they're situated all over West Memphis, and...
Those things are not permissible. That's not allowable.
Also, Counselor Crum, I think with this resolution, that has no impact on this. I think if they're not in the right zone or district, they can't do that.
My question was, I wonder if we open up this office out here at ASU Mid-South, and they would have to come there, that would help the city monitor who's opening up small businesses. That's all I was asking.
Okay. Phil, did you want to speak on that, or?
I mean, I'm good with it. I just...
Well, yeah, I, I don't know, you know, it, that's more of a code enforcement issue. Uh, it may, it may tip us as to where someone is planning to open a business, which we certainly then could follow, follow through on that, but I'm not sure this program would allow us to, uh, really monitor, you know, where these people might be operating, unless, of course, they come out there and give the address of, of residential area and, uh, for their business. So, uh, i- it, it could help us to, to weed out some of that possibly.
Okay, well, that's, that's...
Well, they still would have to come and get, uh, about it to get the CO if they don't open a business anywhere else in the city, so you still got to come back, uh, to Paul's office, you know, regardless, you know, so that's...
That's what I would like to, I'd like to make sure that they don't overlook getting a privileged license just because they're operating out of their homes, because all these addresses are, are residential addresses. But that's another issue we'll discuss later.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on that R1? Hearing none, all in favor by?
Uh.
Oppose? It passes. Ms. Clerk, will you get that resolution, a number, please?
Yes, Mayor, that resolution number will be 2247.
2247. All right. Mr. City Attorney, O1, please.
O, O2 is an ordinance granting a special use permit for the property located at 1105 Balfour permitting a 150-foot-tall communications tower in an R1 single-family residential district.
Can I get a motion and second to suspend the rules and places on the second reading?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor by?
Uh.
Oppose? City Attorney?
An ordinance granting a special use permit for the property located at 1105 Balfour permitting a 150-foot-tall communications tower in a R1 single-family residential district.
Can I pause the suspended rules and place on the second, on the third reading, uh, more than a second?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor by?
Uh.
Oppose? It's on the third reading. City Attorney?
An ordinance granting a special use permit for the property located at 1105 Balfour permitting a 150-foot-tall communications tower in a R1 single-family residential district.
Um, can I get the motion and second to approve?
So moved.
Can I get a second? All right, um, we got discussion, and also we have Mr. Shannon here, and to give him an opportunity to speak, and, uh, end of further discussion, allow you all to. So, Mr. Shannon, will you come forward, please?
Thank you, Mayor. We could put the PowerPoint up there. Mayor, I'm Mike Shannon, and council members, uh, I appreciate your time today. I'm here with, uh, Pastor Billy Euler, uh, of the Cornerstone Baptist Church, uh, which is the proposed location for this. Uh, Steve Hutchinson, I believe, is participating via Zoom, representative of, uh, Vertical Bridge, and, uh, he's been, he was here two weeks ago, uh, but due to, uh, some quarantine requirements, uh, is, was not able to make it in person here today. As you know, this is a, a, a proposed new 150-foot monopole, uh, pro, the property there is, uh, owned by Cornerstone Baptist Church. It's, uh, a T-Mobile, and now T-Mobile and Sprint are both, are both one, uh, entity. Uh, they're, they're trying to address gaps in their coverage area, and these gaps can't be addressed by, uh, with the existing towers. Uh, this has been approved, uh, before, and, uh, it was, it was ready for a third reading earlier this summer, but there was an issue raised about maintenance. Uh, we provided information about the, uh, the maintenance, and we also have some additional information here, um, uh, and, uh, included in, I'll get to that at the end. Um, if you go to the second slide, please. This is the location of the proposed tower, uh, there at Cornerstone Baptist Church. Um, you go to the next slide, please. We submitted our application in, uh, late June of 2020. Planning Commission recommended approval, uh, and we provided a copy of that to the city council. Uh, there were no issues presented on the first and second readings. Uh, no, uh, concerns were expressed until the September 3rd meeting, uh, and again, we have provided, uh, additional, uh, information about maintenance. The next slide, please. Uh, so we're gonna, and I showed these last, uh, time as well, but you're gonna see there's gonna be improved service and in-building coverage, uh, and the, uh, the, the tower is intended to remedy covers problems in the area around the airport. Uh, we're, we were required to and did get approval to construct the tower in this location by the airport. Uh, in addition, there will be space on the tower for, uh, two additional service providers, maybe Verizon or AT&amp;T or, or others, uh, and, and that could mean either more improved service for other citizens. So this is not limited to just Sprint or T-Mobile, and also there would be space available, uh, for, for use by, by the city, such as, you know, for E911, uh, equipment. So if you'll go to this next slide, this is the current situation. If you'll focus mainly down by the, uh, it's hard to tell some of the pink and the gray, but if you focus mainly down to the, uh, east of the airport, uh, there are several gaps, uh, in coverage there around the airport to the east of it especially, and if you go to the next slide, you'll notice that, uh, there's significant improvement in that, in that coverage area, uh, and in, in addition, the, the pink turns to gray in a number of areas that gives much better coverage to, uh, T-Mobile and Sprint cu- customers, uh, i- in the area. Uh, and so, the next slide, please. Uh, about the maintenance, you know, Vertical Bridge contracts with four hundred tower maintenance, uh, which is headquartered in Tennessee. Uh, they do quarterly inspections and routine maintenance. Uh, we've given you past images showing our nearby, nearby towers that are all well-maintained, uh, and there were some questions about whether it has to be removed, or whether it would be removed if for some reason it, it became, uh, uh, unneeded anymore, and, uh, the, the land lease with the church requires that it be removed within ninety days termination.
Yes, ma'am. Well, he gone, he, did he yell at it?
Oh, no, it didn't make it.
Okay, ain't no sound, it came?
Last slide is just some names, uh, of people with Vertical Bridge that anyone with the city can contact. Uh, we've got, uh, office and mobile numbers and emails for, uh, two individuals to, uh, contact if there are any maintenance concerns or other concerns that, uh, anyone may have with this location after it's built. Uh, we want to be a good partner with the city of West Memphis. Um, again, we think this is even more important to move West Memphis forward, uh, because of the pandemic. You know, we really need reliable service during this time, and this will dramatically increase the in-building coverage, uh, in particular for city residents, and that's important for 911 calls, uh, and it's important to allow students who are, who are doing virtual learning to, to, uh, have good, have good signals. I, I would comment, I noticed that, uh, yesterday, the Pulaski County Special School District announced that it was gonna go, uh, virtual, uh, unfortunately, but it's happening, and I hope that's not, uh, necessarily gonna happen in other places, but it certainly could. I think this would, this would help, uh, if that has to happen. So, you know, we have, uh, demonstrated compliance with the city's ordinances for the special use compliance, uh, special use permit. zoning, uh, has recommended the approval. Uh, we request that the council, uh, approve it so that Vertical Bridge can proceed and improve the digital infrastructure in West Memphis, and I'm...
Mr. Sh- Mr. Shannon? Mr. Shannon? I have a question. Ms. Harris, could you, uh, put your phone on mute, please?
I'm sorry.
Right. Mr. Shannon, I have a question. Uh, I guess I'm trying to get some clarity. Part of this conversation I'm hearing is the church in support of this, but I guess if the church is the one giving you the land to place the tower on their land, when that automatically make them, uh, in support of this?
They are, they are in support of that, certainly. It's, it will provide, uh, some, uh, rental income for the, the folks, for the church, uh, that will be put back into the community, obviously, uh, and, uh, you know, I think having it located on a church, especially right outside, uh, Pastor Billy's, uh, uh, office, uh, he's gonna make sure that thing is, is, uh, is clean, and I'm sure he'll be one of the first people to call one of these numbers. Yeah, i- if you, if it's okay with Mr., I'd like the pastor to say a few words.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Um, I would just like to add something that I didn't realize until the process started. Uh, the biggest need that Cornerstone had during the pandemic time, that we had no way to combat, was, um, I can't even use the adjective better. I have to say internet service, because that particular corner, there is nothing but that old little gold AT&amp;T broadband wire, and I know Cornerstone is the last plug for that thing. Uh, we were not able to do any kind of video streaming. It put us at a real disadvantage for getting the gospel of Jesus Christ out. Um, this tower is not only bringing the cells here for the better cell service, but it will bring fiber optics to the community as well. So better, I mean, internet period will be available, not just to us, but to the whole community. So to be honest with you, our largest benefit is gonna be the internet access, but the income's gonna help. I can't say it won't, but, uh, that's, that's our stand, and we do approve of it being there, and we're happy to be a part of improving the cell reception.
Minister, how long have you been a member of the, uh, Cornerstone?
I've been a pastor there for a little, about two and a half years.
Two and a half years, all right. Do, do you live in West Memphis?
No, sir.
Oh, you, okay.
I worked there about fifty hours.
Okay.
I'd like to read a letter.
Again?
If he's through.
I didn't hear that. Did he ask me something?
I don't...
Councilman Weles?
No, I want to read a letter when he's finished.
You can go ahead.
I want to, I want to read a letter in behalf of the Christ Outreach Church and Avondale Missionary Baptist Church, and the fact that we're trying to, we're fixing to offer something in a residential area that we've never done before, which is gonna make a precedence that anybody else can do it also. Let me read this letter first from two different, two different churches right there side by side. Mayor McLennan and the members of West Memphis City Council, written on, uh, October 13th, 2020, Christ Outreach Church as a congregation is opposed to a cell tower being considered on the property adjacent to our church on 1015 Balfour. The World Health Organization listed cell towers as a possible carnigan, carnage, meaning a possible cause of cancer. The microwave radiation emissions could possibly cause a risk of individuals that are within 150 meters of this tower. The site proposed for the cell tower being considered is well within this range of our church. Long-term exposure of radiation can cause a range of symptoms, including headaches, memory loss, cardiovascular distress, low sperm count, deaf defects, blindness, nervous, nervous system disorders, and thyroid problems. Would the FCC lie to us? The FCC is run by the, and run by and funded by the technology industry with a financial stake in putting more towers in more places. Thank you for your attention to this statement, Brother Jerry Blansett, Brother Harley Cursey, and Richard Barchie, the pastor of Christ Outreach Church. I think when we put it in a residential area, that we're opening a can of worms that will never be able to seal back up. Thank you.
Councilman Weles?
Sir?
Are you saying that, um, cell towers are causing cancer to people in the community? I'm just trying to get a understanding of, of the letter.
This is some of the, this is some of the stuff that's been reported, that it will, if, if, if you're in close range of it, which these towers could be way within that range, that it could very easily cause ailments. So you don't want to put them right up in your yard. You know, we're, we're changing something that we're doing, going in a residential area, then the next person comes up and wants to put one in his backyard across town. How are we gonna stop him? And the churches don't want it. The other two churches don't want it. So, I mean, I, I'm representing those two churches in their behalf.
Any further discussion?
Councils take consideration.
Is there any further discussion by the city council?
Nope, you got the, Mr. Shannon?
Okay, Mr. Shannon.
I might address that comment, I'm sorry. Um, the, uh, the, the, uh, Telecommunications Act, uh, 46 U.S.C. 332, uh, prohibits, uh, the regulation of wireless facilities on the basis of the environmental effects of radio frequency emissions. Uh, that is in the statute. Uh, there are a number of cases, uh, across the country that, uh, confirm that that is not a valid, uh, consideration when determining whether a, uh, a, a tower can be placed in a particular spot, uh, and, um, uh, so, uh, a- as well, there's also, uh, discrimination provision of that act, uh, 47 U.S.C.A. 332. It's, uh, you know, that you, you can't discriminate among providers of functionally equivalent services. Uh, I believe that there are two other proposed tower locations, uh, in, in this area, in, uh, in parks, uh, and Steve Hutchinson, do you, what's the na- the na- is it Tilden Park and, uh?
Grimsley Park.
Grimsley Park. The, uh, there are, this, there are, they're not necessarily towers there, but the, the council has approved towers for those locations, and certainly Grimsley Park is right in the middle of a residential area, and so it would not be a precedent that, uh, that setting situation, if you approve, but I believe those have already been approved, uh, in other locations by this board, and we believe that to refuse to put it in our area, to put it, the grand hours, uh, because it's in a residential area would be discrimination under the federal act.
Yeah, but you're in, you're, you're sitting by churches that don't want you, though.
I'm sorry?
You're sitting in an area with churches. It's not, you're not close to, you're in the church area. The churches don't want it on top of them.
Um, I, I just wanted to say something. This is in the county drainage district, and as far as I knew, they had denied the application for this easement.
Sure.
In their drainage easement. Paul, can you comment on that? Because that was the last I heard about this.
Uh, yes, that, well, that was the first time they applied. It was in the county drainage easement, a- and this application, they have relocated the tower outside of the drainage easement. So, so this, this particular application and location, also on the same property, is outside the easement. Uh, as another point of clarification, there's been no tower approved for Grimsley Park.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Mayor, I call for, I call for the vote. Second.
Uh, he, is it, was there any more discussion? Hearing none, uh, Ms. City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mayor. Counselor Kat?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
Day.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Holt?
No.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Pass. Pa- pass.
Yes, Mayor. How do you vote? Did she say pass?
She said pass.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Counselor Mohammed?
I'm gonna go along with the counselors in that ward. I think I will say no.
Counselor Monday? Counselor Murray?
No.
Counselor Pulliam?
No.
Counselor Weles?
No.
Ms. Hutchinson, did you want to vote, or you?
I, can you, can, can you all hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, Mayor.
Um, I'm, I'm, um, checking with, with, uh, Counsel Mohammed, along with those councils in their board, I have to say no.
Counselor Crum, would you?
The motion fails. Ms. Harris. Ms. Harris, will you meet your phone, please? Ms. Harris. Will you meet your phone, please? The most, the motion fails. So, it failed. Thank you, Mr. Shannon, for your time. Thank you. The motion fails. Mr. Attorney, would you read O two, please?
Sir, O two is an ordinance to amend ordinances two-one-O-two and two-three-four-nine establishing water rates for the city of West Memphis and for other purposes.
It'll be back in two weeks for, to be on the second reading. Uh, Todd had to do a public hearing. Uh, we have met with the utility commission on, a joint commission. We're talking about the rate, so. But he had to go through the process, so it'll be back in a couple of weeks for a second reading.
Ma'am, when they put, have they set a public hearing yet or they don't set one?
Um, Todd, are you still on?
Yes. We, we have not set a date yet, so, w- once we get back from the holidays, we'll go from there.
Can we, um, you said, oh, you're coming to Thanksgiving holiday?
Yes, yes, yes. After next weekend, we will set a date.
Okay, that's right. We want, well, we, no, okay, I guess.
Let me, let me ask this question too, as I have you, uh, Todd. And the air council, with everything that's going on with COVID and is it safe to have a public meeting to ask some people to come out?
I know. I know. I, I wanted to talk to you, to you about that offline and we need to discuss that. If we need to, you know, this is one of those things where, you know, I, I want to give everybody a chance to speak up, but, you know, with what's happening currently in the uptick, I, I want to, to sit down with yourself and discuss that further.
But sure. Mr. City Attorney, could you chime in on it? Because, I mean, you know, can you chime in on? Hello?
I didn't hear the question. I'm sorry.
No, no, Dave was talking about, Todd, just explain him, explain again what you just said.
But again, I, I'm pretty sure every time we've done this, anytime we've had a rate increase, we've had a public hearing for people to come and speak. I don't know, is that required by state law or city ordinance that we have a public hearing? And Mr. Pulliam, what I was talking about is if I need to, again, I, I've just started the process. If we need to wait until, you know, we can read it a second time. And if we are not able to do that, and if it is required and we can't do this public hearing until after the first of the year, that's what we'll do. And we'll just wait to read it a third time until we are able to have a public hearing if that's required by law.
Okay.
See, you know, I, I just, again, doing what is best for the safety of all, for everybody and, you know, making sure everybody has input on this.
Well, keep, don't, do we have the capability? I'm just saying if we wanted to. Can, can we, I'm just saying, so we put it out there, let them know how we're going to do it. I mean, is it possible that they could watch and hear what they want to say? Cause I mean, it shouldn't take long, because if nobody, uh, he, I mean, come or either sign in to do it, I mean, it's over with. It shouldn't, wouldn't you take no more of that? If nobody, you know, signed up to do it, I mean, it's not, it's over, it's open and closed.
Yes, sir. And I would have to sit down again with the people like, uh, Joe Akers or, and them on how, like, the best way to do one of these. I have, has anybody else had to do a public hearing within the city, you know, electronically?
Well. But I was just.
Is that legal?
Is that legal? Well, I was just thinking, you know, let your water rates, I mean, you know, in, you know, City Attorney, he talked on it. I was just talking about, you know, the criteria that we have to meet, you know?
Yes, yes, sir.
Well, I mean, the pub, we, we probably should have a public hearing of some type, I think, when you change the water rates, but I'm not sure about the ordinance, so we can look into it.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I, I have a question. This may be a little bit off the subject. We were talking about perhaps increasing our water rates. Is there something currently wrong with our water pressure?
Currently, no. There was this morning.
Thank you. I didn't want to say that, but that's what I was referring to.
Yes, ma'am. We, we had a, we had a system issue that occurred overnight. And when we came in, we had to a, address that issue and turned on the necessary pumps to get everything up, which then caused some of the water also become discolored because of us moving the water through the system as quickly as possible.
Well, thank you so much. I was trying to figure out what was going wrong. And of course, I had not been home anytime during the day because of work, but I've not checked my water pressures, but everything is okay now. Is that right? And everyone who may be listening in on Facebook, if you had problems with your water pressure this morning, Mr. Peterson, he's general manager of the utility department. He's explaining to you that that issue has been resolved. Thank you so much, Mr. Peterson.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Todd. Uh, permission request. Uh, I need permission to sign a contract between Pinnacle and the city of West Memphis for the right of way acquisition for the South Loop project. Amanda spoke on it earlier. Uh, did you all have any other discussion on that?
Make a motion, we, uh, yes.
Second. I'll pay by.
Aye.
Oppose? And pass. Sign that contract. Second, I need permission to amend the final statement of the community development to reflect a reduced grant amount from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and to re-allocate funds from economic development activities to housing rehabilitation and demolition activity, which I think came of forty-nine dollars. Paul, you want to speak more on that or that was enough what he gave you off?
Thank you, it was enough. So moved.
Second.
I'll pay by.
Yeah.
Oppose? Thank you. Community reports, uh, airport? Councilman Kuhn, airport?
Yes, sir. We, uh, the airport, uh, commission met yesterday, well, actually this morning and, uh, the highlights of the meeting were the bid opens for hangar three rehab will be in tomorrow at ten AM and, uh, the commission is going to have a Zoom meeting Monday at twelve fifteen to approve the bidder for the rehab project out on the hangar number three. Uh, the commission approved, uh, the proposed twenty-twenty-one budget. So those were the highlights of the meeting this morning. And, uh, then the, uh, chamber met yesterday, uh, the board and executive board. We focused on, uh, the parade restrictions that will include no candy throwing, no spectators staying, all spectators staying in their cars if possible and masks must be worn. Uh, the, the, uh, COVID protocol must be followed. Uh, the parade will be the shortest parade in West Memphis history. And, uh, but the chamber's confident that our community will have a great time and it's going to be shown on the public access channel and, and if you can't make the parade, you could go out and, and watch it on TV. And then the other thing we talked about was the, uh, the board also, uh, decided to propose postpone the annual banquet until later in the first quarter. Normally we have it, uh, in February, uh, about mid, late February, but, uh, because of the pandemic, we're going to move it on back and, uh, then see what we can do about getting it scheduled. That, I'm complete, that's the completed reports.
Thank you. Councilman Pulliam, A and P?
Yeah, uh, hold on, go, go to the next one then.
Okay, utility? Uh, utility? Police?
I'm sorry, Mayor. I, I'll pick it up tomorrow. I didn't get a chance to make the meeting.
Okay. Police Department?
Yes, sir. Police Department, we did meet on November the fourth, uh, twelve oh five in, at noon. And we had no old business. And we did have a citizen request. An agent from ACSI spoke on an issue with eighteen wheelers during U-turns in the front of their yard. ACSI is located on Saffron Drive. When the trucks do so, it causes ruts in the ground and businesses. Which, they are responsible for praying to have it fixed. This has happened about seven times so far this year. Also, they have issue, they have issues with trucks parking on their parking lot at night. Chief West suggested that they put a chain and lock assembly to keep them from entering their lot. Also, I contacted Miss Amanda Hicks and she's working to resolve that, help them resolve that issue of keeping them out of their, off of their property. Another issue with Councilman, Councilwoman Mohammed had a few concerns for public works. They are seeing many citizens not pulling their garbage cans back into their yard after trash is picked up. Code enforcement is putting on sticker notices out, letting people know that this cannot continue to happen. It was also determined that the city council would request all ordinance from the city clerk's office for reviewing so that they can strengthen these ordinance. Council Mohammed also spoke loud, about loud noise speeding in Warford. Chief, Chief West will put extra patrols out to assist in this matter. The meeting was turned over to Chief West for these observations. He will beef up controls to contain speeding, discourage speeding, loud music shootings. He will also investigate shutdown gang activities and get guns off the street. And he will also assist, his department will also assist our code enforcement officers with all the infractions, the planned ball in streets, loud music tracks, trash violations and other, other matters of other violations in within our city. I'd just like to thank Chief West for his concerns and for listening to our complaints. And we look forward to seeing things, uh, get better in Warford and West Memphis.
Thank you. Fire Department?
Uh, yes, sir. The fire department met on Tuesday, November tenth. Chief Clay conducted the meeting on that particular day and he did a, a very, very wonderful, absolute job conducting that meeting. He and of course Chief Barry Ely were present. Uh, some of the issues we discussed were, uh, the resignations. We had one to resign. And, um, our vacancies are as follows. We have one fire chief vacancy. We have a division chief fire marshal vacancy. We have two firefighter paramedic positions that are open, three single role paramedic, uh, positions and one secretary fire rec- records clerk position that's open. We are anticipating some of those openings to be filled within the next few months or so. We had no retirements except for the one fire marshal who retired, uh, Mr. Carter, who was a very, very wonderful firefighter. We had no new PPE issues. We had no vehicle maintenance, no building maintenance to mention. Very short meeting, very sweet meeting. As far as the training, uh, we had one firefighter attending firefighter school and another firefighter attending EMT school, slated to graduate December eighteenth. As far as the EMS collections, we had four hundred, two thousand dollars, two hundred and six dollars and eight cents. And then as far as the budget, the trial balance ending on nine thirty of twenty twenty was fifty, let, let me see here, fifty-three point fifty-five percent for supplies and services and seventy-one point twenty-seven percent for salaries. Uh, they, the fire department is preparing the twenty-twenty-one operational budget and they should have turned that in yesterday, November eighteenth. And that concludes my meeting, my minutes.
Also, there would be, thank you. Also, there would be a new fire chief and a new fire marshal next month. And I will not, I will not help on the records clerk because I've been explained that position was created, but was never needed. So, uh, I'll come back to you if I need something different. A and P?
A and P, the West Memphis A and P met on October twenty-first at four PM. Uh, Jim Jackson reported collection was a hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight dollars and eighty-seven cents for September. Actually was down eleven point thirty-four percent from last year. And the total collected was nine hundred, thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars, which was down, uh, same time last year, twenty-six percent for the collection. The commission voted to accept a little bit of Christmas decoration from, uh, festival design. The commission is looking into uh, building a new warehouse space in, you know, instruct, uh, it instruct, uh, Jim Jackson to engage with Rod Garis for design. Um, also, the tree is here. According to GM, we told you yesterday, the tree is here. The commission is looking, the commission has agreed to sponsor, uh, this year, Creighton County Christmas hosted by ESU Mid-South. The commission entered into an agreement with hun- strategic partners for tourism related asset research. And also is investigating, you know, looking to, uh, well, it's got one on my report, but I think you're looking at putting up two sky cops, uh, around the, uh, perimeter of the civic auditorium and the, uh, well, the civic center civic auditorium and then I think it should be able to cover part of the, uh, the, uh, city hall as well, you know, for safety. It's the end.
All right. Was, did I overlook any committee reports?
Mayor, may I, may I ask a question while, uh, we're talking about the committee reports?
Sure.
Uh, I just want to ask, uh, and to see if anybody's had any scuttle about our employees about the Christmas bonus. Is, is or is there not going to be one or, you know, and, uh, I mean, I've heard a couple of comments. I just wanted to know if anybody else has been listening to anything out there.
I know Councilman Hope, uh, asked, talked to me about it. He made that concern known. I agree and support our city employees, but I also understand that we have to look at what's going to be the best, as far as I see it, especially, we in an unknown period with this COVID nineteen, so. But it's definitely going to be the decision of the council, but I just want to make sure I provide the information at them, where we tour, where they say, are we in a position to do it or we are, are we not in a position to do it? But definitely be the decision of the council.
Is, uh, Tracy, Tracer, you still on? Okay.
And I did talk with the budget chairman, uh, he would like to wait, but I would definitely allow him to, to address you all, uh, pardon on that point.
That's why I, I, I didn't know if he was still on or off. I was going to ask him the same thing, but that's okay. I, I, I got it.
Okay. I had no presentation, but I did want to, um, commend the dream team. And we called him the dream team and you all can correct me if I said anything wrong. Ms. Tori Perry, Kenneth Johnson, Ms. Rhonda Standrick, Amanda Hicks and, uh, Chief Rhodes. Did I forget anything about in the dream team? I'm happy to announce that the city, through the federal government, has been awarded a million and thirty, a million and thirty thousand dollars part of the COVID relief money that we're going to get back. Pretty much everything they, they bought and they managed it and turned everything in on time. We getting all that money reimbursed from, I think from fire trucks to, uh, overtime that some of our officers worked with our colon, with our COVID relief task force, uh, Nick with this, um, the, uh, advertising and promotion. So we got a lot of people that being paid out that money, which is going to definitely do great, great wonders for our, uh, general fund. As well as we still right now in the ra- in the rating to get up to two hundred and eighty to three hundred thousand dollars from the state for COVID relief. So that's going to be great for our general fund. I want to commend those, uh, individual for their hard work and standing on top of this and, and doing everything that we need to make sure that our city was successful during this COVID time, because we are in a time that many cities are struggling from A and P to cell tax, but West Mem- Great leadership with the budget and decision-making along with this administration. We are still keeping that heat above one. I just want to thank you all as well on that as well. Also, I just want to lastly say the COVID nineteen, uh, pandemic is rising. If you see, I think, um, Tuesday, we had seventeen hundred deaths in the country. Seventeen hundred deaths in the country. I just want, I want to continue to what they are doing, making sure they follow the city guidelines, washing their hands, staying six feet social distancing away. If not being around large crowds, if they don't have to be around large crowds, uh, I think the governor has mandated for churches to have no more than fifty people. If they were holding them, allowing the people to be over six feet apart from one another in the other large events. So right now, numbers are going up. Arkansas is a hotspot. And we just try to do everything we can to keep our citizens safe and spread the word to make them COVID nineteen safe. So. I just wanted to say that as well. Um, Um, I'm asking all my department here to prepare for anything that we can do to, to, to make sure that we keep our COVID numbers down, uh. We had a few scares today. I know some of you all noticed the hall was, was closed today, so we definitely want to make sure that we do everything we can to keep the people safe. I don't know what this, um, uh, this Zoom is the way. And, uh, that's all I had to say. We have one citizen request, Ms. Alice Warren. Is she here? Ms. Alice Warren? Ms. Patricia, you, you see her?
She's not here.
Ms. Patricia?
Yes.
Do you see Ms. Warren?
No, sir, she's not here. She, uh, canceled.
Okay. Well, that's all I had. Do we, anyone have anything else before we adjourn? All right. We'll be praying for one another and let's move forward. Uh, can I get a motion and second to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?